Good evening, everybody. Today is Thursday, October 25th. Welcome to the regular meeting for Clear Lake City Council. Um, Madam Clark, please have a roll call. Sorry, I looked at my agenda, I got confused.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Mayor Sabatier?
Here, thank you very much. Ms. Overton, would you please lead us in need of our duties?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening, we have Tom Ely for invocation. If you could please step up to the podium. Thank you so much for being here.
It's quiet. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, that we can come together tonight, Lord. And we just pray, Father God, that your blessings be upon this city council meeting tonight. We pray, Father God, that our hearts would be receptive, our minds and our, and our mouths would be also receptive to what people have to speak about tonight, Lord. So again, we ask your blessings and we just give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. And Mr. Folsom, are there any changes to our agenda this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor, no changes.
All right, thank you so much. And moving on to Mr. Jones, any announcement from our closed session today?
I do have an announcement. So there's a motion made by Ms. Overton for the city to retain the services law firm of Baron and Bud related to sulfur fire litigation, which will be subject to entering into a written agreement with them. That was seconded by Vice Mayor Harris, and the vote was five to zero.
Thank you very much for that update. Chief White? Chief White, would you like to do our presentation today?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will be introducing a new police officer to our city.
Right, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council and members of the public. I'm honored to be here today to introduce our newest police officer, Mr. Shane Otis, who's to my right. Shane attended high school in Santa Rosa, California, and graduated in 2008. He played high school football for four years and ran track for three years. He attended the Santa Rosa Junior College Public Safety Training Center, Basic Police Academy, and graduated in 2017. Prior to being hired as a police officer, Shane worked in loss prevention, where he is held in high regards by his supervisors and his coworkers. So we're pleased to welcome him on. He's had about, what, two weeks under your belt? Yes. So, and he just worked today at Deisha, so just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce him to you and give him a say a few words briefly.
Hi, it's great to be here. I'm really doing the gas strike about working for the city of Clear Lake. I'm really enjoying it so far, and I just want to thank Chief White and all of you guys for having me here and welcoming me into your community and making me a part of your team here, kind of making the city safer.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you so much.
You have the patches, nice, I agree, I agree. Uh, so we're moving on to public comment. I have two cards here. The first on my list is Kathy Qualls. Hopefully I said that correctly.
Yes.
Please step up to the podium. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you so much for being here.
And fire protection is the subject.
Yes.
And just real quick before you start, I want to let you know that for public comment, we're not allowed to get into a discussion for brownneck purposes, uh, so we are here to listen.
Okay. Um, I hope, I hope you all listen really close. I'm a fire victim of the sulfur fire. I lost my home and my income by two rentals I had next door to me, so I wanted you to just know a little bit of background of why I'm here about this. I now live in Lakeland subdivision, and across the street from us is a, a long orchard that has not been maintained at all. The, the vegetation's quite high. There's also metal things out there that if there were a fire, the environmental impacts from that would, you know, would, just like the rest of the fires, the environmental impacts that we've had because of all the metals and toxins and things like that. And so, yep, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I, I wanted to know, I, I did, I did what I thought was my due diligence in trying to go through the system to, um, have the owner responsible, you know, to do this, to take care of it. Um, I'm still taking care of my property out on the lake. I still weed it, still maintain it, where I don't have, I, I'm not putting my neighbors at any kind of risk for fire because I'm not letting it grow. And here these people are letting it grow. I was told by the city it was a corporation and that, um, they paid the fine, they went through the process, they ended up paying the fine. And, uh, so they think they're all good, and I personally don't think that's acceptable. There's people that live here that are, are, um, we've got seniors. If, if that was to cause fire, not only would our subdivision be gone, but we've got two senior, big senior housings here in Clear Lake. The seniors are scared to death of being trapped in a fire. And, and I can tell you how frightening it is. I've been through it. And so, um, I'm hoping that just by me being here, if there, I, I just want to see if there's any kind of way, and I would do whatever I could to help, to, um, bridge the gap between city and fire department, being able to get them the ordinances and the, and the, um, what is it, the, I'm sorry, I have to look at my note. They need to, they need to be able to give out administrative penalties to be able to get this going so that, and the only way they can do it is for the city to be able to work with them on it. So it takes, that's why I'm here. I'm asking all you people here if you would do what you need to do to protect our city. Sixty percent of our Lake County burnt in this fire. Sixty percent, that's over half. I'm not saying that...
Go ahead and finish your sentence.
Okay, thank you. I'm not saying that the fire, I know the fire was hot and very difficult for firefighters. I know several firefighters in Cal Fire as well as our fire department, and I know it was a very hot fire, the ones that took my place. But it takes that little spark to start the fire. If that little spark starts the fire in that orchard, what's going to happen to our town? What's going to happen to our people? People are not going to rebuild, they're not rebuilding out where I live. And so, if there's some way that maybe we could work with the police department so that we could get something enforced that these things could be, you could, you could send out citations and make them accountable. Don't just say, okay, you paid your fine, you're good, let's go. That's not acceptable. That's not getting the problem solved. We need to be able to do something as a city, as a community. We need to be able to do something to take care of this so that we quit having to worry about fires. We don't want to worry about them anymore.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next on my list is Liberty Perry. Public survey regarding tobacco retail license results. Thank you for being here, Diane.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Um, so my name's Liberty Perry, and I'm with the Tobacco Prevention and Education Program with Lake County Public Health. And a public intercept survey was conducted with 126 residents of Clear Lake to support the Tobacco Prevention and Education Program, um, with an effort to encourage the adoption of an implementation of a tobacco retail license policy in the city of Clear Lake. Tobacco, or sorry, public intercept surveys have a meaningful role in demonstrating public support for tobacco control policies. Surveys were conducted through a face-to-face, um, interactions throughout several community events in, in Clear Lake. Ninety-seven percent of the residents surveyed believed that smoking is harmful to your health. Here's a little bit more in-depth results of the survey. Fifty-nine percent believed that it was easy for youth to access tobacco products, including e-cigarettes and vapes. Eighty-eight percent would like to require a tobacco retail license in the city of Clear Lake. Eighty-eight percent of those surveyed said that there should be laws to enforce, um, the prohibit, that would prohibit tobacco sales to minors. Seventy percent would like an implementation of retailers to pay a yearly tobacco fee to sell the tobacco products. Eighty-six percent of those surveyed would require, would like to require retailers lose their tobacco-selling rights and privileges if they violate these laws. The public intercept surveys were instrumental in demonstrating initial support among Clear Lake residents for a tobacco retail license policy. Amongst the participants surveyed favored requiring retail, retailers to obtain a tobacco license, require fees for selling tobacco, tobacco products, and stronger enforcement of laws prohibiting illegal sales to underage youth, and the loss of a tobacco-selling privilege for those who violate these laws and regulations. The results from the survey provided initial data to advocate for a policy change in the city of Clear Lake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for that information. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a public comment? It must be on an item that is not on our agenda, or else you have to wait for that agenda item.
Hello, my name's Patty Duke, and I'm a resident of Clear Lake, and I've had a problem with a neighbor. She knows the neighbor. So do you. And staying out of trouble? No. I'm sending the dogs out now onto private property, private easement, and the lot next door aggravating my dogs. I follow the dogs, and he's waiting behind the gate with his children and their friends, and comes out and calls me names and runs my family down. And this has been going on for well over ten years, and nothing seems to be done. We've put in animal nuisances and no callback. The only time I saw the animal control officer was when she was looking for one of the dogs who apparently had a broken leg, and I guess that was put down because the dogs are allowed to run free. There's been frequent attempts at poisoning my dogs. I can't prove that he shot my dog with a BB, but my dog doesn't bark at him anymore. Dogs know who's good people and who's not. And this is ongoing harassment. Took him to court in 2009. This was supposed to stop, and that wasn't late for it. And the bailiff knew him and said it had been going on ten years before that, so before I lived there. So he's trying to force people off of the property so he can use the easement, private easement, have the survey, Julie Burrows, the letter, another attorney's letter. He doesn't care. He's going to park on it, he's going to drive on it, his kids are going to beat on it, and it's become a flaunting and harassment, and I should be able to go to my own property, and I should be able to be comfortable with my property and not be harassed on a daily, almost daily basis. And it's really getting old. And when we put in the nuisance, which we're supposed to get a callback, I think there's been at least two, Larry and Rose Rice, East I have people next door who understand that there's a problem. But to everybody else in the neighborhood, he's wonderful, his wife backs him up in everything he does. And it's getting really tiring. But I'm not moving. But what's it going to escalate to? That's my question. Because nothing is ever done. He knows, he knows people in the city, he knows dispatchers, he knows police, and he's grown up here, so he figures he can do what he wants, and he'll say that. So it's getting old. And I don't know if you can do anything about it. I hope so. But he doesn't regard laws as something to follow, and he does what he feels like doing, and his wife backs him up. So the kids are learning disrespect, found out, and I'm leasing the property next door for a 95-year-old World War II vet. They disrespect him, ruined the easement area of his property, and he had to fence 8,500 surveyed to prove it was his property, and it still doesn't matter.
You'd like to stay till after the meeting, then maybe we can talk after the meeting? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on this item, or on this item, make a public comment? Are you getting up, John?
I am, right?
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item from the consent agenda that the council wishes to pull to speak on? Seeing none, is there any item that the public wishes to pull so we can have further discussion? Seeing none, bring him back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I commit a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris and a second by Councilmember Overton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. We will move on to item number eight. Discussion and consideration of request for consent by the city of Clear Lake for withdrawal of Casitas de Mendota LLC of its interest in partnership of O Village Investors relating to the development of Olympic Village Apartments, and request for the city of Clear Lake to sign a subordination agreement in reference to the same project. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Assistant City Manager, Helen Flora.
Good evening, Mayor Sabatier, members of the council. So, um, in 2009, the Clear Lake Redevelopment Agency entered into an agreement to provide a loan of $700,000 for the development of some affordable housing units, Olympic Village, and, uh, so this contained a total of 54 units. There's some details in the staff report about the affordability levels and so forth. The $700,000 is a 25-year loan term, which will begin being repaid, um, in, I believe it's 2023, 14 years after the, the loan was made. And, um, there's sort of a, a complex arrangement with the, the partners that are involved in the structure of the loan, but one of the partners, Casitas de Mendota, um, is requesting to be removed as one of the administrative general partners from, um, Global Premier Development. And, um, so as part of the agreements that were signed at that time, the city, uh, has to provide its consent to allow them to withdraw their partnerships. There's no money changing hands as part of this agreement. And so our recommendation would be to go ahead and, um, consent to the withdrawal of them. The agreement is included in your staff report and, you know, authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. As part of our discussions with the, um, law firms representing the, the general partner, they also said, well, it's a good time to, uh, bring up another issue and address it. Fannie Mae, who's the primary owner of the note on the development, has a agreement they would like the city to sign that would subordinate, um, the loan that we have to, uh, the primary lender. So currently, we have a deed of trust, um, and they would like us to sign this agreement, uh, changing that deed of trust essentially to a lien against the property. And so in our review vote, we would anticipate that, you know, if it came down to some type of default, we, uh, probably would not be ahead of Fannie Mae in this, but, um, don't really see how it's in the city's best interest to sign a subordination agreement that, uh, you know, turns our deed of trust into a lien against the property that may be more difficult to fulfill. So, um, you know, this really is only relevant if they do default on the loan, um, but it's our recommendation at this time that the council not move forward with, um, executing this subordination agreement. So that's kind of the quick overview, um, and I'll try to address any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flora. Councilmember Kramer?
Just for clarification, our deed of trust is the first deed of trust?
Yeah, I mean, and so it's, it's a partnership. O Village Investors includes us as a partner as well as, um, everyone else, and so, um...
So we have two positions? We're both a lender with the first deed of trust?
Well, as part of, um, yeah, we're, we're a partnership with O Village Investors, which is the owner of the property, um, includes the city of Clear Lake in that partnership. And, um, the other partners include, um, the folks that provided financing and, um, bigger note, I don't remember the total cost of the project, but obviously 700,000 is significantly more than that. Uh, but we are a partner in that deed of trust for the whole amount.
Okay.
So they're essentially wanting us to pull out of that agreement and have a lien for the $700,000 against the property.
That makes no sense whatsoever. If you're in first position, you stay in first position, you never give down.
Right, right, right.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Just out of curiosity, I'm, I'm just trying to follow along here on the, the reasoning behind the request for withdrawal. That's my only concern. Obviously, if, uh, Casitas de Mendota, Mendota, was, uh, one of the original, uh, signers on this contractual agreement, he would have some, obviously some responsibility to meeting the obligations of the agreement. And if we're excluding him, we're releasing him from his interest in the property, but we're also releasing him from his responsibilities to repay a loan to us.
Well, um, so there's the administrative partnership, and there's the general partnership, both of which have multiple partners within them, of which Casitas is just one fraction of that. So there's, I, I'm not sure exactly how many entities are involved, but it's, it's actually a fairly large number, so, um, it's just a portion of that administrative general partnership. And from the information we've been provided, we don't feel like it's going to have any kind of impact on the overall partnership or, you know, the success of the project moving forward.
So we wouldn't potentially see a, like, a slow exodus of people from the partnership requesting?
Um, you know, don't have a way to know for sure, but, um, you know, they have to have the, this body's consent if they do want to withdraw. So if there was an additional withdrawal, we might, you know, be a little bit more concerned, but at this point, we don't have any, you know, I feel like there's any reason to be concerned about this change.
That would be my, my concern, is that there's no, um, you know, ill, ill repercussions of releasing somebody's responsibility to repay a loan that has agreed to do so, so...
But you're right, before they're supposed to start paying the loan.
Right. I know it's weird.
Councilmember Overton?
Yeah, well, I guess that was one of my concerns, they received the money, correct? They received, they received the money, so, um, uh, how do you turn around, I don't care if it's a partnership, and, and remove one person off a loan obligation? I mean, it's a loan obligation. I, I don't care if it's a partnership or not, every person in that has a loan obligation. We are releasing them. We're basically telling this person, hey, go, I'd like to see that happen with me, you're on a loan that you don't have to pay. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think this makes sense to me.
Well, that, i- i- if I may, from what I'm understanding, the agreement would make it so that those still left on the deed would be held responsible for the same loan, and there wouldn't be a deduction or any loss of the loan repayments that are due to the city.
That's correct. Okay, and is there, I didn't see anything, maybe I missed it. Anything from the, um, other partners stating that they're okay with this?
Um, I, we didn't request any formal letters. My understanding is they, um, all the other partners are agreeing to this so far, um, so...
Well, they can't be released unless, I think there's at least a majority or all the partners let them out. So even if we're, if we're the only ones, this isn't going anywhere. It'd have to be the others.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I wouldn't want to be releasing somebody, and then the partners are like, well, what did you do that for without us having some kind of documents state? I mean, I, I'm a paper person when it comes to this kind of stuff, of, uh, something, uh, legal document from them stating that they, you know, will be held, the rest of them will be held responsible for the loan, uh, if we release him. I mean, um, nothing here is telling me that if we release him, that, uh, the rest of them are going to pay automatically, so...
Well, the original partnerships are all staying in place, um, so that obligation doesn't change. It's just there's one less, um, entity, for whatever reason, in the administrative partnership partnership, um, that is responsible. Which results in us being able to hold somebody responsible, uh, if, if payments aren't coming in when they, the payments are supposed to start coming.
Councilmember, were you there?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to think of, of a future if something goes bad, which I hope nothing would go bad, but you just never know, um, that that partnership comes back to us and says, well, you know, we don't want to pay his portion, you know, he was obligated the same as us, and you released him, so his portion is released. I just feel better if I have something in writing from them stating that that's not something that's going to happen. That's my feeling.
Councilmember Kramer?
Again, on clarification on the partnership that we're part of, um, there's other partners that's part of the general partnership, I take it. What percentage of those partners are we, half of it, or what's our, what's our percentage interest in this partnership?
I don't believe that's clarified in the agreement. Open doubt on what percentage. So, you know, we're one of the general partners, as I understand it, and this person is an administrator, this entity is an administrative partner. You know, I can, can, if you'd like more information, um, you know, I don't know, maybe we need to bring this back with more information. I'm happy to dig through the agreements, um, to try to address any specific questions you have.
Personally, I wouldn't mind bringing it back, and also, as it's while we're looking at that, also, um, wouldn't mind getting a letter from the other partners with the consent that they're, you know, releasing. To me, that would just save us in case something in the future does happen, um, and that we have that from them. I think that's just a security thing, like the necessary, that it necessarily has to be, that I think that we would be that on, on record.
Vice Mayor Harris?
I think I'd feel comfortable, um, today, uh, tabling this, we're, um, we're waiting for their information, but I think we could go ahead and make mo-, um, make some movement on the denial.
Of the subordination?
Subordination, if that's all right? Or do we have to make it all at one?
Yeah, you can split it up.
It's all on the agenda. Because I mean, if we bring that back, I, I could, I think we could move forward on that, but I'd like to just bring back the, the, um, just, just seems strange to me that all of a sudden we want to remove this guy, or he wants to be removed from this. So without an explanation as to why he joined into the agreement initially, and now he just wants out, so, I mean, he does have some responsibility into the, into his portion of the agreement, even if it is a multifaceted agreement with multiple people, it's still, he's one of those people, so I'm just, without more information, just curious as to why he wants to, to exit. Um, but now the other aspect of it, I would be even very comfortable moving forward with...
Councilmember Bennett?
Yeah, I agree, uh, wholeheartedly. Uh, while there may not be any financial, uh, effects right now, the staff work states there could be in the future, so I think we need to have all the teeth crossed and the eyes dotted. Uh, I'd feel comfortable, I think there's been some legitimate issues, uh, raised here, and, uh, I would like to see it brought back to us. And is our city attorney reviewed all this?
Yeah, I have. I've talked to Ms. Flora about it, but I think you bring up some good, I don't know the answer about where the other parties are on it and what the implications are. I, I just, I would have, yeah, I, I think there's more questions that can, we can answer before you go.
Yeah, I, I would feel comfortable also bringing it back and having whatever, um, reviewed by, uh, legal.
And, and I see it all written in the, um, portion that we're supposed to sign, that the caution and concern is that we don't see their signature saying we approve of, and, and will, uh, make sure to take on...
The rest.
The rest, as this new group minus the previous one.
Right, because you're changing the contract, one person is basically being removed, and we, I want to make sure that the other people are in agreement that they're going to take the full responsibility. That's my concern.
And like I said, it's there, it's just not with a signature.
Right.
Okay, I can agree to that. Do we want to open? Do we want to open this up to the public to comment on this item? Seeing done, I'll bring it back for action on subordination.
Mr. Mayor, would you make a motion to deny the request for entering into a subordination agreement related to this project?
I'll second that.
Motion by Vice Mayor Harris, second by Councilmember Kramer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, moving on. Item number nine, approval of resolution approving the commitment of CDBG program income funds for code enforcement. Mr. Flora?
Hi, will we introduce Mr. Flora?
Thank you. So as you're aware, the city of Clear Lake was awarded $500,000 of community block grant funding from Department of Housing and Community Development a few months ago. And this funding is to be used for supporting the state's code enforcement activities. The plan at this point and the, what's incorporated in the 1819 adopted budget is to utilize those funds over a two-year period. But we also, you know, with other loans that the city's executed over the last several years, there is what's called by HCD program income, you know, loan repayments that comes in. And so whenever we want to spend some of that money, we have to get approval from HCD to utilize that for something that's eligible under the CDBG program. And so that's what you have there tonight. And so the request is to commit at this time up to $200,000 of program income that the city has to be used for code enforcement activities within the city. And so essentially, we're just kind of trying to plan ahead. And as you're, I believe, aware from some past issues with CDBG funds, HCD wants to see a commitment and see that that money is being spent down. There's a plan to spend that down or else they don't want you to be spending down the grant funds that they've given you. So they reviewed the, the resolution's been prepared and are okay with that. Essentially, what this would do would give us kind of a third year, we think, in supporting the code enforcement program beyond the half a million dollar grant. Actually expect that we may end up coming back and having more than $200,000 of program income that's available by the time this three-year period is over. But this is what we think is prudent to allocate at this time. So you should have received a slightly updated resolution. So apologize for some confusion about the grant and the program income. And so we added a few things to more clearly illustrate the interaction between the $500,000 CDBG grant and the $200,000 in program income. And so you can see that our estimated staff cost for the two and a half code enforcement employees that are eligible to be funded with CDBG would be just over $573,000. $92,500 for just miscellaneous expenses, training, uniforms, other costs associated with those employees providing that service. And then general administration is, this here is basically the maximum amount that can be utilized. I think it's seven and a half percent can be utilized for general administration. So that would be Adeline Brown staff time for helping if we had to have a consultant for some portion of it. If we, this is not necessarily a commitment to spend that on this and if we don't need it, you know, it can be spent on code enforcement activities. But wanted to show that breakdown, which totals the $700,000, that should be available. So hopefully, if there's any questions you may have on this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flora. Any questions for staff? I'll open it up for the public to speak on. Anybody wish to speak on this item? And I will bring it back for further discussion or action.
Mr. Mayor, I would happily move to adopt resolution number 2018-46, approving commitment of CDBG program income funds for code enforcement.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bennett and a second by Councilmember Overton. If I could please get a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye. Thank you very much. That one was important. Item number 10, consider first reading of amendment to Clear Lake Municipal Code, Section 9-1.4, Building Code Adoption by Reference. Chief White? I would like to introduce our city attorney, Brian Jones.
Well, along with Chief White, he and I worked on this together. So if he has any comments, he's more than happy to chime in. But we're here for a first reading of an ordinance. And in many cities, use this practice where you adopt by reference model codes or state codes. And in fact, the city of Clear Lake does that already. But what we, Chief White and I went through and went to see where we had some holes and what other codes we wanted to adopt. And we feel that after reviewing a variety of codes, these are the ones we want to, some of them we're going to take out that were not applicable anymore and some we're going to add in. And we believe that this gives our building officials and our code enforcement officers just a little more tools when it comes to doing inspections and to potentially citing folks. So these are the codes, we'll see. And also what we did this time is we specified the exact year in which these codes were adopted. Previously in our code section, we just said the most current version. This is the correct way to do it. So we're now going to adopt portions of the California Building Standards Code, California Building Code, Uniform Swimming Pool, Spa and Hot Tub Code. We even knew that was a code. The International Existing Building Code, International Fire Code, Uniform Solar Hydronics and Geothermal Code, Uniform Housing Code, and Uniform Code of Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. And if you have any specific questions, Chief and I are happy to answer those questions. I think this helps our city.
Any questions? My only question that came up was, all the top ones are obviously very recent. You said that we're using the most recent, so the 1997 Uniform Housing Code is the most recent?
It is, interestingly it is. So when that does, I think it's probably due for an update, it's been 20 years. So when it comes up, we'll bring this back to the council. So my thought is between Chief and I, we'll attack these every one to two years and then bring them back to council for update. Any other comments, Chief?
No, I would just add that you may recall, I don't know, about two months ago now, there was a long discussion about red-tagged homes. This is in part and direct response to that. So I understand this is one piece of a larger legislative puzzle that we're putting together to address all these issues. The other thing is that by regularly reviewing them as the city expands and increases with development and that sort of thing, we can make findings specific to our area and actually modify the codes. At this time, we aren't doing that. But that sets up a framework to do that. The way that we were doing it before isn't the way that typically it's done. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to open it up for the public to speak. Anybody wish to comment on this item? I see a thumbs up, that that was a good comment. We'll take it. And I'll bring it back to council for further discussion or action.
I'm ready for action.
Or action.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the first reading of ordinance number 215-28, 2018, and set for second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer and a second by Vice Mayor Harris. And this is, probably should have a roll call.
And someone, it is a long title, we do need someone to read that.
Really?
That was you, Russ.
Want me to read? Okay, I'll read it. An ordinance repealing sections 9-1.5 through 9-1.16 of Chapter 9 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code and amending section 9-1.4 of Chapter 9 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code adopting 2016 California Building Standards Code, 2018 Uniform Swimming Pool and Swimming Pool, Spa and Hot Tub Code, 2018 International Existing Building Code, the 2018 International Fire Code, the 2018 Uniform Solar Hydronics and Geothermal Code, the 2018 International Fire Code, the 2018 Uniform, am I reading this twice?
Yep.
No.
No.
For me?
It just all sounds the same.
Okay, twice, okay. 2018, I think I'm reading it twice.
Yeah.
We can read it, well, if you want to read it all again before you are finishing out, it'll be fine.
All right. 2018 Uniform Solar Hydronics and Geothermal Code, 1997 Uniform Housing Code, 1997 Uniform Code with Abatement of Dangerous Buildings by Reference.
A second. Mr. Chief?
Oh, yeah, a second.
All right.
Again. Second, second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please, roll call.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on. Item number 11, consideration of approval of the purchase of gym equipment for the police department through a grant from the Redbud Healthcare District. Resolution number 2018-51. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, yes, I would like to introduce Chief Andrew White.
All right, and then again, there are members of the council, members of the public. The police department, as you know, our employees face various physical challenges, especially those that work out in the field. Those physical demands and their ability to meet those demands have a direct impact on the community. We do not currently have any sort of exercise facilities or equipment that are on-site. Having such an on-site facility would benefit the employees, would also benefit the city by keeping officers in physical shape, reducing injuries, impacting stress and improving morale. Prior to my arrival within the city, the police department had explored doing this. The employees were actually successful in obtaining grant funding in the amount specified of $37,543.13 from the Redbud Healthcare District through a grant program. Since I have arrived, they've been working on converting the expansion room within the police department, which will be used as a space to hold this. So at this point in time, they just finished the painting in there and they're ready to move forward with getting the equipment. Our Clear Lake Municipal Code requires coming to council. In this case, it was a little bit different. Generally with a grant, the grantor would actually grant us the equipment or take care of purchasing it. However, in this case, they gave us the funding. And as a result, although the police department obtained three different quotes, it was considered an informal process. So what we're asking is that council waive the formal bidding process by a four-fifth vote and allow us to continue with the purchase. I have contacted the vendor who gave us the lowest quote, which is about $10,000 below the other quotes. And they're going to honor that pricing even though it's, I think, like six months old or so. So we would definitely like to move forward with this and we're hoping that council will support us in this.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Overton?
So, so one of the things I've asked over the years was the physical fitness of our police department and what officers are required. I know other cities require them to a certain standard. I was told because we didn't have a place for them to exercise, we did not hold that standard. And so now that we are going to have it, is there going to be a standard put in place? Policy put in place?
So generally, in my experience, the way that cities handle this is more of an incentive-based program. So for example, you can administer onsite testing and if an employee passes it, some of them have like tiered levels like gold and silver, et cetera, then they'll get an additional pay. And from the city return, you tend to have less workers' comp rates, that sort of thing. As far as a specific standard to maintain employment, we always have a fitness-for-duty standard. But it's not like the military where you have to meet a certain height, weight, that sort of a thing. In this case, I think this is one piece of a larger wellness program that we want to implement that I think would achieve those goals. So I think we're aligned with that. It's just, it's implemented a little bit differently than what most people are used to. And I would say that by having it onsite, it certainly increases our ability to, you know, effectively offer those programs and also too to have some input. For example, we've been working with Melissa Swanson, with our HR SAC group, and to make sure that we're doing this in a way that's responsible, getting people to show them how to use the equipment, et cetera. It's not just providing a facility and saying, you know, go do good things.
And also is, I mean, I really want to thank our officers that have put in their blood, literally, I've seen ladies sweating tears into this. They did an awesome job, that they took it on themselves to, you know, do painting and fixing up other rooms so that they could have this. So, I mean, I really want to commend them for all their efforts in doing that. That's, you know, not something they had to do. They did these things off-duty. So I was really proud to see our police officers are, you know, doing those things. So I really wanted to put that out there, that they saved a lot of money by doing it themselves too. So it's not just the equipment, it was a lot of work of all these other things that they did.
Absolutely. If they hadn't have done it, we wouldn't be here today to ask for the funding because the room, it was a storage room. It wasn't suitable for people to go into.
That's really bad.
There was a lot of sheet rocking and a lot of other work.
Paint, sheet rocking, making new walls.
Definitely thank you. I see no other pens. I will open it up for the public. Anybody wish to speak on this item? No thumbs up this time? No, okay. Bring it back. Any action or further deliberation?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to authorize. I would also like to thank the Redbud Healthcare District for their enormous support in this area. They have been a great partner in, not only for our department but for the county areas of law enforcement, through the district attorney's office where they have the child abuse interview rooms that we obtained a large donation from them years ago. And they update it every year as needed, including the maintenance for the new system, the recording and the sound and everything else. They are an intricate part of our community and I want to give credit to them.
Thank you for making that statement.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to authorize the purchase of gym equipment from Sacramento Exercise Equipment Center, Inc. as part of a grant from the Redbud Healthcare District.
A second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris and a second by Councilmember Overton. If I can please get a roll call.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Mr. Folsom, this time it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chief White and I today attended the PG&E debrief with government officials to talk about what worked and what didn't work during. So I learned a new term today, new acronym, P S P S, which is the Public Safety Power Shutdown, which is what PG&E calls, you know. There were a lot of constructive, they were actually there to help. It was a really, it ended up being, I thought, a pretty good meeting. They wanted to hear from us what the issues were. They've already heard from a lot of people, including Chief White, about some of the issues that we had prior to this meeting. But there were folks there from the county, from the school districts, that were there to give them information about how it impacted us and, you know, constructive ways to make it better if there is a next time. So I found that to be a positive meeting. I attended the UC Davis Clear Lake County Shareholder Meeting the other day. UC Davis Center for Regional Change has received a grant to study Clear Lake and kind of our entire region. And that was kind of their kickoff meeting, so we found out a little bit about what they're planning to do. I updated our Destinations Magazine editorial for the 2019 Destinations Magazine, so just turned that in today with some new photos. So when that comes out next year, it's going to look, hopefully, we won't have the picture of Borax Lake anymore because we provided them with much better photos. I attended the Lake County Chamber All Business Dinner last week along with Councilmember Kramer. Councilmember Overton was there in a different function and Chatterbox Catering did the food and it was very good. I attended the, I want to thank Lake County News and Lake County EDC for the Candidates Forum for sponsoring that here at City Hall. I had attended it, it was nice, it was very civil debates. So thank all the candidates for that. Lake County EDC, I attended that monthly meeting. I got an update on the Lake County Economic Development Strategy. That's coming to fruition. I believe there was a meeting last night and tonight in other parts of the county to kind of just get some final input before coming back to give a presentation. Looks like December 3rd, we're probably going to be having a joint workshop with the county and with the city of Lakeport to go over kind of the findings that Dr. Robert Eiler's come up with. We had a marketing committee this week, last week, I don't remember anymore. One of the fun things that came out of that is that the circus is coming to town, so there'll be more information coming out about that. The Chamber Commerce is going to be sponsoring that. The Chamber of Commerce is going to be sponsoring that. And then staff and I met with Lake County Broadband Management to discuss their future expansion plans here in Clear Lake, so that's kind of an update on some of the meetings I've had. Just want to remind everybody that City Halloween is on Wednesday, October 31st, from 2:00 to 5:00, and the theme is superheroes, so come on out. Thank you. Did I get it all?
Which one are you going to meet?
Come and see.
There was one thing you forgot.
Oh, what'd I forget?
Chief White, will we give you the details?
Oh, yes.
So we will be moving into the 21st century with our email provider. Tomorrow, we'll be transitioning to the Microsoft Office 365 platform, and we'll be giving you some instructions on how to connect. But we've now joined that the City Hall and Police Department are now in a unified system. Still, security measures in place, but we're leveraging some efficiencies there.
Good. Yeah, I'm real proud to say that we're, you're going to be seeing a lot of technology upgrades coming to the city here, and a lot of it's because of both Chief White and Alan Flora and their tech backgrounds and bringing that to the city, so I'm very pleased with that. Wonderful.
So Chief White's going to be moving everyone's emails tomorrow, and so until there's some changes made on your device that you get email from, you won't be able to receive that, so look for some instructions from either me or Chief White tomorrow on how to configure that. If you want to come in or whatever, we can help you with it. But you can always, we'll be able to access through a web browser with your new login and stuff. So we just want to make sure you're aware of the change, and we'll make sure that you don't miss any important constituent emails tomorrow.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Councilmember Overton, would you like to give us your report?
I think I left my calendar in the office, so the only thing I say is I went to the marketing committee meeting, and I am excited that we're changing some of the things that were in the book, because it really didn't represent us very well, and that we're starting to market our city like it should be. I think that's helping us, you know, with the positive outlook that people are starting to have on our city is because we're having a positive outlook on it, bringing in nice, bright things, and really starting to stand up for ourselves. And I think that's important for us to do in order to be recognized in the county as the forefront now, I feel that we really have become. So I'm glad that we got this marketing committee, and I'm sorry I can't record anything else because I just don't remember.
Blurred.
It's a blur. I've been running all week, I have no idea what it does.
We'll look forward to next report next time. Councilmember Kramer.
Okay. As City Manager Folsom said, I attended the Chamber Dinner last Wednesday, I guess it was. I was actually wearing two hats, City Councilman, but also representing Lower Lake Community Action Group. The only thing, the thing I really liked about this meeting is that there was each of the organizations around the lake that are members of the chamber gave reports on things in their specific areas, or cities, or towns, and there's some great ideas that were shared, things that I'd like to bring here going forward, and you'll be hearing more about them in the future. Again, as, as Mr. Folsom said, who was in part of a forum, candidate forum on Thursday night, and Sunday morning, bright and early, at 7:30. Oh, I've been updating you as we go on with the generator project and the certification of the community center as an evacuation shelter. We have finished wiring the generator. Monday, the technicians from Cummings will be there to give it, add a battery and start it, make sure that it doesn't blow everything up in the building. We believe alone it's all wired and nits, so it is basically, will be online after Monday. Sunday morning, the other part of this, the portable restroom shower combination trailer that I've been expecting for the last month or so, and keep telling everybody it's coming, it really is, it came. Mike Dean and I were there at 7:30 to receive it from the delivery that was brought, towed from Indiana. Then on Tuesday, Tuesday, we all met.
Monday.
Again, Mr. Folsom, Councilwoman Overton, Mike Dean, Councilman, Member Bennett, we had to stand apart, the three of us, by the way. We're all there again, we showed it off to them, opened it up, and I think everybody's pretty excited about it, and I know I am. So that's my report.
Could I ask, were you recognized recently by the school district for something to do?
No, that was actually two years ago.
Oh, they just posted it?
Well, I like posting.
I saw it anyway. Two years from today, it still occurs.
It's an election year. But nobody posted it back then, so go ahead, feel free.
It was for bringing our agricultural history to our schools, which is extremely important for the use of today to not only know the past, but how important agriculture is today in our society, especially in this area.
Speaking of history, there was one other thing that...
Oh, if you remember that, go ahead.
Okay, well, why don't you go?
No, no, you go ahead.
We had PEG TV wanted to do, or actually, in conjunction with our Lake County History and Museums, want to do an oral history, start doing an oral history of Lake County. Councilmember Bennett was supposed to be the first victim, as they told us, but being a smart man, he backed out and let me go first. So it was a, it was a very, very interesting time, I think at some point in time, you probably, you can probably go online or go to the museums and see actually different people being interviewed about the history of Lake County as they remember it. I actually had a lot of fun doing it, because as you all know, I enjoy talking about the history of Lake County.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bennett.
Along with that, the oral history project is continuing, and the next one being interviewed. And then, right now, we're focusing on ranges and farms in Lake County, and then we'll move on to other things from the complete act, but it's very interesting and very educational. Also with PEG, we've had a meeting, well, that's it to continue on that. We had an ABA meeting the other day up in Lakeport, abandoned vehicle meeting. We're still trying to get a member, Large, appointed to the board, but once you get attorneys involved, nothing simple. Our attorney was not involved, and the county attorney, the grant, was there and explained why we need to go through certain processes to get that citizen appointed to the board. And I'm hoping by next meeting, that will be accomplished.
All right, thank you very much. Most of the things that I've done have already been spoken about. I did go to the ribbon cutting for a new business, the Chamber of Commerce, did a ribbon cutting, I think it was Wednesday and Tuesday. Tuesday, yes. Yesterday was at Lower Lake, it was Tuesday, and so the California Fire lawyers, who have already helped some of the unfortunate fire victims in our area, to help recover some of their losses, and so that's a wonderful addition, especially in the unfortunate atmosphere that we're in here. Went also to Lower Lake Elementary, they opened up a new gardening and sixth, seventh grade quad center area, looked really nice, still smelled new, like a new vehicle. And that's measure Y that was in action right there, and so something else that the community supported two years ago in 2016, and we're seeing the effects happening now. I wanted to give a couple thanks to some of our staff. First off, I wanted to thank Chief White. That interaction we have with individuals changes everything in the way that people perceive our city. I just want to thank you for walking out and talking to that lady that spoke during public comment, so that she at least felt heard, and that her concerns were going to be looked into, and I really appreciate you doing that. The grading in the avenues, I've been going through the avenues a whole lot lately, because now my new way of going home is through the new damn road extension, and the amount of grading that's happening in the avenues, I just wanted to make sure, please pass on, and I'll call Mike Baker as well. I want to thank the Public Works Crew, they've been, those roads look really nice. It's been a huge change in the way that those roads are treating those who live on those roads. Everybody is really happy right now in the avenue, so I want to say thank you to the Public Works Crew. I want to thank the PD, I've been seeing them really around the new damn road extension a whole lot, making sure that people are aware of what to do, to stop at the new stop signs and to not speed down towards the schools, and also, Public Works added those new...
Rumble strips.
Rumble strips, which really makes a good effect for people to be aware of what changes have occurred there. On the marketing committee, I want to thank Mr. Flora. I really appreciate the conversations that we've had, and we had what I feel was a very much-needed conversation to figure out what are the steps to market our city. And we've been really focusing on bring tourism, bring tourism, bring tourism, and as a marketing committee, we're going to come back and look at, is tourism really the first primary goal that we want, or is it investment so that we can look at ways to bring tourism after the investment has been done? And I think that is a much more logical conversation to have, and I really appreciate you being part of that conversation and bringing that to a head, and we'll look forward to more of those conversations. And that's all I have for now. We have our Animal Ad Hoc Committee next week on the 30th, and another marketing committee on the 31st, and I'm working on something that I will keep secret, and so that'll...
Of course you do.
That'll make you want to hear more when we tell you more. I'm excited about something that we're working on, so that's all I have for tonight. Any future agenda?
Did you finish something?
Or redo? Oh, my goodness. I'm ashamed.
Somebody might have missed the elephant in the room.
I'm so sorry.
Very shameful. Nothing big to report. Obviously, so important. I'm involved in a few community action projects right now, because that's this time of the year for me, and this is when that kind of thing happens between myself and the community and my company. And then I did attend with you, remember? We were together for the ribbon cutting up there at Lower Lake Elementary, fantastic. And I want to make a special mention to Chief White and our PD on their efforts for enforcement, recent enforcement efforts that are taking place, to try to help with some of the drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and different things that are affecting our community. It's really, really exciting for me to see what's taking place right now in our community, and I appreciate all the efforts that are underway. And that's all the time I have. Thank you so much.
Any future agenda items? No? All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Have a wonderful evening.